It says it wants to access the microphone.
Say yes.
That we want.
Yup.
You just can't talk.
I got no problem with that.
Steelers, especially with that on.
Hey, it's better than the other one I got in my truck.
Do I want to know?
I think it would hurt people's feelings and there's probably not a safe place close enough by.
Wait a minute, are we in the middle of Wisconsin?
We are!
There's something always asking me to do it.
Yeah. Come on.
It's true.
Well, you know, I think even some of the media is just now it's coming up because I thought I wanted to... I don't understand what they're doing.
Repeat the number one more time.
6:30.
Oh.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
So, we do have 1-5-5.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, no problem.
There's always one.
I was just trying to find this max of...
It's one less than the... One less than the one more than the average.
Okay.
We're logged in.
So, next.
Okay.
Logged in as attendee. Because I don't see you on this list. Are you just signed in as a cat?
Yeah.
Okay, then you... Just give me a second. I just didn't want to switch somebody's name chat that's supposed to be there.
Yeah. Mr. Uke, please write your full name and type your paper.
Hey, Catherine, how are you? Your camera wants to make sure of you.
Yeah.
I just don't want somebody crashing the party.
I know, I saw that. How does that look like a yellow? Right?
That's right.
Coswell. It's not the best way. Oh, you know, it's not tender.
I don't see you.
We're just noticing online the different levels of life.
All right.
There you are. Cool.
All right, so pass in. All right, I just need one second to find this public comment. Are we moving anything between Neo updates and subject teacher?
We can do Neo update last.
Okay, so we'll move that.
Let's do that.
Okay, all right, everybody ready? Everybody's on, ready? Okay. Lance, you good?
Good.
Okay, all right. Cassie, you ready? All right. Okay, it is 5:03 PM on Monday, September 28th. I'll have to unmute. I would like to...
So, we all have to mute our machines?
On speaker.
Somebody... This is... We're gonna troubleshoot this for the first meeting.
What's that, John?
Audience members on the computer devices.
Your volume.
Yeah, your volume.
Your volume.
Yep.
Something different.
Yes, thank you. Okay, it's the volume. Okay. Go down there.
Take care of it.
Okay. All right, we'll try again. It is 5:04 PM on Monday, September 28th, and a number of people still have their volumes, but I'm gonna call to order the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings
Certain way the volume can be criticized.
will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology, and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-415-655-0001, then dial the meeting room access code 133-529-6560, or through the virtual WebEx meeting link posted on the Wassa School District homepage. In the event a passcode is needed to enter the virtual meeting, it is 1-2-3-4. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email CPAC@wassaschools.org with public comment in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the Board President. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the board meeting through the following means. Wassa School Board meetings are streamed live on YouTube. Viewers may visit the site by searching for "Wassa School Board YouTube" on the YouTube channel. Wassa School Board meetings can also be found on the ViVit the following Thursday. All meetings will also be cable cast on Charter Spectrum Channel 981 at the following times: Mondays at 12:00 PM, Wednesdays at 8:00 AM, Saturdays at 6:00 PM. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact the Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or CPAC@wassaschools.org. Okay, second on the agenda is public and student comment. So, we have two forms of public comment. We will have in-person public comment first, followed by recognition of the submitted public comments received by email. Do we have the public comment list? The signup sheet? So, we need the volume. It's the volume. No, no, it's not. No, I'm not reading the volume on that one. It's this one. Okay, while we are waiting for the public comment signup sheet, I want to review the public participation at board meeting policy. This is policy 167.3. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. We will have the following rules shall guide this public comment. Anyone having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may participate during the public portion of a meeting. Attendees must register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes duration. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic at the same meeting. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk if anything they say during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. The presiding officer values civil discourse and may interrupt or terminate a speaker's comments when the statement is too lengthy, disruptive, disorderly, threatening, or obscene. This presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. With that, we'll see who we have for public comment. Clerk Peck, will you be... Where will you be for our speakers?
Speakers will be right there.
Okay, they'll be right there, and then...
I forgot the cards, unfortunately.
Okay. So, when I call your name, please come down here. This is where the speaking will be, where John Uding is, and I'll just ask that you say your name and your address, and Clerk Peck will alert you when you get close to time. So, we'll start with... It looks like we have a number of people signed up. We only have 30 minutes for public comment, so we'll start with Melissa Clade.
Good evening, Melissa Clady, 222-510, Buttercup Road, Wassa, Wisconsin, 5441. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be in person and share my thoughts. I am coming to you tonight as a human resources leader, a past board president for my church, and as a parent. I have written in multiple times and watched the last few board meetings, and tonight it is through my collective experience I offer this perspective. I urge you to keep your hearts and minds open and sincerely work together to find common ground and solutions for our children and our teachers. The Arvinger Institute is a renowned leadership organization which published resources focused on a concept called outward mindset. My organization has built a culture around the use of this approach, and as I evaluated the behavior and culture of the board as demonstrated the last few meetings, it appears this group may benefit from this perspective as you discuss and decide such important matters. So, according to Arvinger's website, mindset is how we see the world around us. It's the lens through which we see our work, our relationships in our world. It is at that foundation of all that we do and shapes how we do it. There are two primary mindsets, internal or inward, the least effective option. In that option, we see others not as people with their own needs and challenges and objectives, but as objects. We see them as vehicles to achieve our own objectives and results, or as obstacles that are in our way or causing problems, or as irrelevancies that can be ignored. During the last board meeting in particular, several board members were so focused on what they wanted that it shut down any true dialogue and desire to find common ground. An example of an inward mindset was putting forth a motion that fully focused on a virtual environment before any discussion was had on the administration's proposal, which attempted to find a solution of choice balancing in-person and virtual. Contrast that with an outward mindset, where you see others including each other as people who matter. You take into account their needs, challenges, and objectives. You focus on collective results. You feel responsible to do your jobs in a way that supports others in doing their jobs. So, as board members, what I encourage you to do differently tonight than what I have witnessed in the past few meetings is to listen and respond with an outward mindset, one that is focused first and foremost on the mission of advancing student learning, achievement, and success, and second, focused on the constituents you represent. Please check yourself and literally ask yourself throughout the meeting, "Am I really hearing the concerns of the kids, parents, teachers, and community members I represent?" The belief that is contrary to my own would suggest X. How would I, or how could we, accomplish X along with my own belief of Y? How can we do both? As a parent of a middle school child who's been a straight A student and someone who generally takes things in stride, I initially was primarily concerned about the most vulnerable. However, after last week, I'm very much concerned about my own son. He's regularly kicked out of Google meets classes and misses content and has struggled to regain access. He regularly experiences his Chromebook freezing up, and by the end of Friday, he had eight missing assignments. By Sunday, he was up to 11. He's stressed out, overwhelmed, and feeling defeated. He's struggling to sleep. He misses his friends, and he needs in-person school opportunities. I urge you to find common ground amongst yourselves as a board and with the families and teachers who responded to the survey. Yes, there is division, but you have the opportunity to offer choice and find solutions that can work for everyone. Your administration has put forth a proposal, and I urge you to accept it as a starting point. It's not ideal in terms of all setup and consequences, but it gets everyone who wants to be back in school an opportunity to do so, and those who want to remain virtual that choice as well. It would allow for teachers who feel they are at most risk to support the virtual environment. You have lost over 400 children based on the decisions and inaction to date. That is enough students to fill two elementary schools and provide millions in additional funding to your budget. Please, I urge you, listen with the intention to find solutions and common ground and get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Mr. Kreischer, if you will, come to the spot here and state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
John Kreischer, 151-008, Juniper Lane, Wassa, Wisconsin. The new survey results conducted by the Wassa School District should not be surprising. Overwhelmingly, as they were in June, parents are ready to send their children back to school. Seventy-five percent of the parents, in fact. We are not a vocal minority as the school board and other virtual supporters have portrayed us to be. In fact, it is the four that continue to vote for virtual that are in the minority. Four hundred and thirty-three students, make it four hundred and thirty-six, as I took three of mine out last week, have walked away from this district. This attrition will not only... It will only continue to grow, should deeply trouble the district and all of you as board members. This is millions of dollars walking out the door, speaking with their feet. Look at the districts around you who have successfully executed returning to their... Returning their students to in-person learning, all while managing cases. Just admit that you've got it wrong. It's okay to be wrong. My wife thinks I'm wrong half the time anyway, as well. It's not okay to be wrong and continue to force your agenda on an entire community. I hear a... I heard a teacher who said they were on a committee and never met. I've also heard a teacher that said they were on a committee and met for two hours. This doesn't sound like proper planning. The schools show no signs of being prepared for schools or for social distancing, no protective measures are in place, which we see in all other schools. What has been done since schools have started virtually? Has any work been done? Why are we waiting to implement these measures? They should already be in place. Why does the district continue to waste time? What was supposed to take two weeks somehow is going to take five weeks now? As citizens and electors within the district, we have presented to the board information that we felt constituted a conflict of interest and bias on the school board. According to the Wisconsin Association of School Board governing rules, even a perceived conflict of interest would require a board member to abstain from voting or discussing a topic where conflict exists. The concern we presented to the board related to the donors donating to the campaign for Congress of Ms. Dunker, who have also been submitting emails in support for virtual. These individuals have the right, but we feel this is where a conflict of interest comes into play. These donors and supporters of virtual aren't just random electors in the district. Many of them are her friends, Nancy Stenzel, Joel Lewis, Kay Grilling. Ms. Grilling, for those in the audience who aren't aware, is an applicant to fill the vacated board seat. Not only is Ms. Grilling a donor for Ms. Dunker's campaign and a supporter for virtual, she is also a $500 sponsor for a fundraising event tomorrow night for the campaign. Kyle O and Jane Rouge continue to publicly promote Ms. Dunker for Congress, which they have the right to do. But you have to see why we as parents in this district find all of this to be a bit shady. And let's talk about the conduct and professionalism of board members. I think everyone in the audience in this community would agree that our elected officials should conduct themselves with professionalism, integrity, and objectivity, right? Board members are welcome to conduct themselves in public however they see fit. It says something, though, about their professionalism or lack thereof when they post comments like this on Facebook. For those of you in the audience that don't know this acronym, it means "I don't give a F what people think about me."
Decorum.
And again, not a crime, but it helps paint the picture, doesn't it? If they conduct themselves publicly in this manner, what can we expect as members of a distinguished school board? This type of character has no business being anywhere near a school board. School board members are supposed to remain apolitical, objective, and impartial. I'm merely shedding light on situations so we can understand why we find ourselves as the only school district in Marathon County to be 100% virtual. This board, while supposedly trying to protect the community, has wreaked more havoc and caused more devastation than they could have possibly imagined. The child neglect, hunger, physical abuse, sexual abuse, substance abuse, financial loss, job loss, loss of insurance, suffering of special education students, deterioration in academics, anxiety, depression, suicidal thoughts, and the pain that this board has caused and continues to cause is incomprehensible. It should be criminal. It's not. I hope this board stands up tonight for what is right and what is just, and thinks closely about the students, families who are suffering in this district. The integrity and respect for this board within the community is in shambles. I hope you will fight to restore it tonight.
Ms. Witts, if you could say your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
My name is Amanda Witts, and I live at 154-938 Wild Rose Lane in Wassa, Wisconsin. This is my first board meeting that I've ever been at. My main one concern tonight is my daughter. I am sick and tired of having to work 16-hour shifts, come home, be up until 2:00 in the morning with my daughter, who is so behind because she cannot understand any of the virtual learning that you guys provide. I've gone through two iPads, and it's only been, what, three, four weeks into the school? She's continuously kicked out of her iPad. I just got notified today after working a 16-hour shift that she has to redo 20 assignments. No, my daughter will not be punished and have to redo assignments because you guys chose that you do not want to open our school districts. I used to work for you guys. I know how you work. You guys think about yourselves, and you don't think about the safety or the cares of the children's education. All you think about is yourselves, and it is time that we put an end to it, and as parents, stick up for our children because they need it the most, not you guys. And I'm done.
Next, we have Bruce Grau. Mr. Grau, you could stand over here and state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, please.
I'm Bruce Grau. I'm from 1115 North 10th Street here in Wassa. I messed up. I sent an email to you, and I'm doing this, so I don't know what I'm doing. But anyway, I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Multiracial Council and the New Poor People's Campaign. I wanted to speak briefly about the need for equitable representation of working people and active engagement within our community with the Wassa School Board. We had before us in November a ballot item to decide yea and/or nay on a two-part referendum affecting 8,000 students and their families, most of whom are working class. Yet, this multimillion-dollar, primarily worker-funded recommendation was developed by a secretive group of people through a process not even known to the school board members. They find no minutes to their meetings. They can't identify who exactly was on this task force. This behind-closed-door proposal will totally disrupt a vital presence of community and support for a very multiracial and income-challenged part of our community. In a city that ranks 383rd in the state for income, they weren't asked. Where poverty rate for every racial group exceeds that of Milwaukee, they were not asked. Where single women with children under five, of whom over 75% live in poverty in Wassa, they were not asked. And at the very least, this is taxation without representation. Top-down decision-making is business as usual, and it maintains the status quo, but that also perpetually hurts the people who are impacted the most. I'm in the New Poor People's Campaign. Many may have heard of us. We're kind of taking on the baton of Martin Luther King's Poor People's Campaign. Basically, we address... We bring working people together. It's a very multiracial organization to denounce the immorality of inequality. We have three of our four basic principles. Our... First of all, when you lift from the bottom, everybody rises. Everybody must be in, and nobody must be out, and those most impacted should be actively engaged and take the lead in decisions affecting their community. So, if you members of the Wassa School Board agree with these principles, you'll break with business as usual. You'll seek active engagement with working people through town halls, and churches, and community centers, areas where working people live and gather and work. It's being done already in the city. Look at District Number Three. Surveys, petitions, pronouncements on TV, they all look good, but they still do not engage the majority of working people in this city. It's a campaign we have to engage. You implement a policy of total transparency and do your due diligence by investigating how this undercover task force originated, and you develop a policy of equity for working people of Wassa that states no final major decision is made until you've exhausted every channel to reach and engage the working-class families of our 8,000 students here in Wassa. Now, lastly, as a healthcare provider, I support virtual schools. I have COVID in my face every day. I also support the need and understand and appreciate the need that families have hardships based on this decision, and that's where I would like to see the school board concentrate their activities to support the hard-working families in this city so that we can have a safe and high-quality education at the same time within these limitations that we have. Equity for working people through active engagement, due diligence, and transparency will help hurt these hurtful events that have been occurring recently. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Peter Fuchs.
Say that again, please.
Peter... Peter Fuchs?
Yes.
At F.C... Oh, okay. Making his way in. And while he's coming down his way, I would like to remind everybody that the Wassa Board of Education has adopted a mask policy, which includes covering your nose fully. So, if you are to the extent that you are able to abide by that in this room to help us reduce the spread of contagion, it is greatly appreciated and the adopted policy. Mr. Fuchs, if you could state your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
Peter Fuchs, 142627 County Road, Tull, Merrill, Wisconsin. We are in the Wassa School District. So, like Bruce, actually, I actually signed up on the wrong list. I thought this was an attendance thing, but thankfully, accidentally, I was inspired by some of the comments. First, I'd like to pay you a compliment. This is a pretty contentious situation, and I appreciate the directness that you are paying attention to the person that's speaking. So, a compliment to you and some of the other board members as well. That's it. We'll differ in opinion from here. I, like many of the others, share the same concerns. There are three children at home. We live in Merrill, Wisconsin, so you can guess that we're pretty much on the perimeter of the school district. We struggle with, like many others, with connectivity. We have three that struggle with connectivity. So, my wife took a snapshot of our last speed test, and it was 0.6 megabits per second. So, you can imagine there's zero chance for... Yeah. So, zero chance for success. We had... So zero chance for success then. We had a health scare at home where I had to quarantine this week, and I personally experienced what they went through because I was on the same network. I was not able to function. It is flat-out that way. And I like to think I'm pretty good with computers. I've been around them for a long, long time. I could not function, and I would fail miserably at my job. Okay, fail is not even close. It's not possible. So that said, so we are the only one in Marathon County that is virtual-only, okay? So something on the board that I would like you to elaborate on is, what drove you to that position when all of the other evidence is hopefully equally shared amongst the other school districts? What's different about us? How did we get to where we got to, where we're the only one? Maybe you guys, you know, somebody else mentioned got it wrong. Maybe you guys got it right. I don't know, and I don't know that we'll ever know that answer, and it might change. But what is different about us? Presumably, at both an administrator and school board level, I'm hoping you collaborated with other school districts and shared best practices and interests and reports and CDC this and that. What's different? Why are we the only ones? And I'd ask you to reconsider that when you go through this process tonight. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Sammy Reel. And just so we can save time, the next person will be Amanda Baumann. So be aware that you are on deck. Ms. Reel, if you could state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Samantha Reely, 154925 Wild Rose Lane, Wausau, Wisconsin. Hello, my name is Sammy Reely, an eighth grader horseman. And while I may be standing here on my own, I am here to represent a large group of kids that find themselves struggling on accounts of virtual learning. Much like myself, kids have been placed in an atmosphere in which they have no other option but to be forced into a virtual setting. Kids with special needs, kids that are attached to you, and kids who need a social atmosphere are left standing in a situation of difficulty. I myself was a straight-A student, one of the students in highest honors, but now I'm just barely passing in some classes. Though, knowing the percentages of the last survey given out to parents in the district, I am now aware I am not alone. We are not a minority. At least 76% of parents responded that they would send their kid to an in-person school, full-time or half-time. As a school board, you represent the community, including that 76%. In your recent survey, a question was asked to the staff, what challenges students are experiencing in Planned Sea? You were asking teachers who have never met me before to be my voice when they have only seen me behind a screen. And not one of those questions were how we were doing emotionally. Virtual schooling has always been an option. In previous years, it has always been presented to kids who thrive in a virtual setting. Programs like Wave introduced that option to students who didn't do well in an in-person environment. But unlike our current situations, students then had a choice. We stand here today, we have no choice. Our school district has trapped us in a virtual setting that may benefit some kids, but not others. One size does not fit all. Our voices have not been heard. Kids sit in silence behind a Chromebook, struggling to comprehend their assignments or configure a way to learn when already, when some are already occupied by siblings or other distractions at home. Home is not a classroom. Home does not nurture student learning. Home does not create an engaging environment, interactive tasks, or learning. Many claim that this year would be different from spring, that students would have an option to do activities away from their computer. Instead, students are expected to sit in front of a screen for eight hours a day, partaking in calls as they fail to tackle their classwork and as teachers struggle with technology. When the school board voted to implement virtual learning, I was under the impression that you would do what was in the best interest of us. But now, as I witness schools around me opening up and allowing students inside their doors to better their education, I have begun to realize the people in charge of my education. My friends from Merrill and DC Everest have been allowed a real first day of school. But look at us. Schools around the districts, schools around the district have students in classrooms, learning and receiving the curriculum that all students should be receiving. But it raises one question. While other students are gaining pathway to the education they need, why is the Wausau School District neglecting the kids left behind? The Wausau School District's mission statement is to advance student learning, achievement, and success. I am not achieving. I am not succeeding. Students around me are not achieving, and students around me are not succeeding. It is your job as a school district to adapt and overcome situations to better develop and advance through troublesome times. You are leaders in children's lives and should be aiming for preparations to overcome the problems that you are faced. Schools around us have thought out and implemented procedures to deal with COVID-19. What have you done? When there were school shootings, you implemented lockdown and Alice drills. But now, every time a problem is introduced, you surrender yet again to virtual learning. In conclusion, I would like to honor a passage from Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, quote, "If you want to be professional, you will do something outside of yourself, something to repair tears in your community, something to make life a little better for the people less fortunate than you." That's what I think a meaningful life is, living not for oneself, but for one's community, unquote. As you board members vote today, I want each of you to think about why you are truly here. Are you here for the better of our community, or are you here for your own personal gain? I am not blind to the situation happening. Although being 13 years old, I am consciously aware of the upcoming election. While I have stressed over schooling, I believed I was failing myself, my teachers, and my parents. But rather, you are the ones failing me. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amanda Baumann. I live at 603 Excel Drive in Wausau, Wisconsin. And I want to send you all thoughts of encouragement as these are not easy decisions. Thank you for taking the steps that have allowed us to meet today. The opportunity to have an open dialogue about tough decisions is not just to assist you as board members. It also helps other parents of the school district. There are multiple views on this topic, multiple solutions, and these discussions help everyone, both parents and school board members alike, to make fully well-thought-out considerations. So thank you very much. I sent you several emails now, and I continue, as we talk today through our next voting session, to urge you to continue looking beyond simple positive COVID case numbers and really dig into the research on the topic. As a parent of a child in the Wausau School District, my head reels with concerns, both for opening and for staying virtual. It is a hard balance. There is no doubt about that. But despite my reservations for opening, recent research has led me to believe that the cons of remaining closed significantly outweigh the current narrative that is being perpetuated. As the media drives fear deeper into the hearts of our families, I was struck by the percentage of parents ready to send their children back to face-to-face instruction. Per your June survey, 85% of family surveys were willing. And now, per your current survey, anywhere between 72% and 78% are willing, depending on the developmental levels. On July 23rd, I sent the school board a recent article authored by the CDC just days before your July 27 decision. And it encouraged our schools to consider the possible destruction of mental health and safety that occurred during long-term school closures. The American Association of Pediatrics also outlines the steps necessary for reopening as well as the potential harmful impacts of remaining closed. And these are such important documents to understand, not just as a school board, but as parents of the Wausau School District. It's so important to understand these documents. Anybody who wants to take a look at the documents, I sent an email. It should be in public comments in the agenda. You can see the CDC link and the American Association of Pediatrics link. Take some time, do some reading. As I read through these articles, a few major bullet points pop out at me, and I quote from the CDC, "persistent achievement gaps that already existed before COVID-19, such as disparities across income levels." We talked about that today. "And races can worsen and cause serious, hard-to-repair damage to children's education." "Remote learning makes absorbing information more difficult for students with developmental delays or other cognitive disabilities." CDC goes on to quote, "Extended school closures are harmful to children's development of social and emotional skills." Further, a review of studies conducted on pandemics found a strong association between the length of quarantine and post-traumatic stress disorder syndrome, avoidance behavior, and anger. Further quoting the CDC, "Extended school closures deprive children who live in unsafe homes and neighborhoods of such an important layer of protection from neglect as well as physical, sexual, and emotional maltreatment and abuse." The American Association of Pediatrics states, the AAP, and they have it bold on their website, "strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with a goal of having students physically present in the schools." The CDC and the American Association of Pediatrics officially endorses the considerable issues with keeping children isolated. And the CDC continues on with their quote of, "School closure disrupts the delivery of in-person instruction and critical services to children and families, which has negative individual and societal ramifications." I know that there are many parents out there that truly struggle to understand why some parents are pushing so heavily for in-person learning. Understanding the repercussions of remaining closed helps us all to remain balanced. These are hard conversations. We need to hear all sides. We are battling more than just a virus here. We are also considering the long-term impacts that isolation may have on child development and society as a whole. Public health includes child development. When we say aloud that our primary goal is to keep our kids safe, it is very important to understand that this means more than simply from the COVID-19 virus. It is much more complex than that. Thank you.
Board members, we're at 30 minutes of public comment. We still have five individuals that are listed. Three are listed as Topic In-Person School. Two are listed as Topic Virtual School. We have a number of other work to get to on this agenda before the 6:00 p.m. meeting, including addressing the substitute teacher issue and the Marathon County Health Department presentation. It looks like we will not have time to address the policy review before the 6:00 p.m. meeting. Per the policy, we permit 30 minutes of public comment unless a board member moves to extend that. That's the policy. And again, we have five comments left and other work to do before 6:00 p.m.
Which agenda item is more important than hearing from the public?
So moved.
I would say we table the Health Department information. I prefer to hear the other five.
Well, somebody needs to make a motion, then.
I motion that we table the Health Department information so we can hear from the last five speakers.
Are we able to have Health Department? Oh, no, it's on this agenda. Okay.
We may need to reconvene after the annual meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to extend public comment. We don't need to worry about agenda, well, it's just a motion. Okay. So we have a motion to extend public comment with the first by Jim and a second by Pat. Is that correct?
And then you said that we can hear the Health Department report and do the substitute teaching after the annual meeting.
I can't speak for the Health Department.
We'll have to reach out to them and see if they're available.
Okay, that's the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries? Okay, so this is the remaining lineup. It will be Corey Silers, followed by Sarah Ruffey, followed by Kelly Stiles, followed by Julie Correll, followed by Joe Bayme. All right, Mr. Silers, please state your name and address for the record, please. And you have five minutes.
My name is Corey Silers. I live at 223565 County Road, K.K., Tonremont. I have an eighth grader at John Meyer, 11th grader here at West. Both my children have shown significant challenges with the virtual learning. Their grades have suffered, and both need the class structure to get back to where they were academically before the pandemic occurred. So I am extremely supportive of going back to school in person. Since others have stated the number, 436 students have transferred, I'm wondering how this loss of funding has impacted our Wausau budget and what adjustments have been made so far to accomplish that, make up for those things. My mother attended Rimelton Elementary School in 1958, when it was brand-new. My brother and I attended that school as well. And now my children both attended there as well. I was a pivotal parent in rebuilding the Rimelton Elementary School playground with over a $14,000 donation in time, material, and equipment, along with the excellent support of the other parents at Rimelton Elementary. I am obviously a strong supporter of the students in this district. I volunteered to build 11 benches for tennis courts here at Wausau West because I was tired of seeing my daughter and the other girls sit on the ground. I am also currently working with the tech ed instructors to build an additional bench project for down the center column. I did this because I wanted to, not because I was asked to. And I think Wausau has a lot of other good people that do the same as me, and none alone this. And I know I'm only talking to half of the board in essence, but I'm talking to all of you. Please don't wreck our district anymore than you did with the decisions you already made.
Next is Sarah Ruffey. After Ms. Ruffey will be Kelly Stiles.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Ruffey. I live at 154313 Dallas Lane in the town of Texas. I have four children, one of whom is lucky enough to go to school in person I have four children, one of whom is lucky enough to go to school in person because he goes to St. Francis of Merrill. And he has two brothers who are here at West that are incredibly jealous. The, since we live out in the country, similar to the other gentleman who said they have zero access to internet capabilities, my children also have zero access at home despite we've tried the Wi-Fi or Mi-Fi from the school and we appreciate that, however, they couldn't get logged on. So now I have children at my office to go to school with Chromebooks that are freezing out. I had one child miss classes so that he could loan his Chromebook to his brother to take a test since it was open for a small window. And we were promised that the virtual program this fall would be better than what we had in the spring. And we were promised that they would have two live sessions per class per week that they needed to attend. Imagine my surprise when my sophomore comes into me at my office and I said, "I thought you're supposed to be in school, in class." And he goes, "Well, I just got done talking to my teacher. I hopped on a little late and class was already done." And this was 10 minutes into the bond. I said, "What do you mean, class was already done?" "Well, they hop on, they take attendance, tell us what to do, and then we're done." That is not teaching from my standpoint. I have a junior who is practically ready to give up, especially in chemistry because he doesn't understand it. He goes, "Mom, I can't learn this on my own." Quite frankly, I couldn't learn chemistry on my own either. I said, "Well, ask your teacher." But they don't teach us, Mom. We need to be in school. I beg you, please consider what's in the best interest of our kids because quite frankly, I think we are failing this generation of kids through the virtual program. I agree there are kids that excel at it. My three kids that are still in school all did virtual school for one year, and that happened to be the year before last. And I think they got a great education, but all three of them asked to go back to school. Imagine their heartbreak when they went back to school only to be kicked back into the virtual world when the pandemic hit and everything was shut down. Please, there are plenty of schools all over this country that have figured out ways to get our kids back to school. Let Wassa School District be one of them. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kelly Stiles, followed by Julie Correll. We do have to stop at 6:00 PM because we do have to convene the annual school district meeting. We do have three speakers. While you are entitled to five minutes, in the event we can get all three done in the 10 minutes, we don't have to postpone that last public comment.
Hi, Kelly Stiles. I live at 3246 North Eighth Street, Wassa, Wisconsin. I'm here on behalf of my senior son. He goes to school at Wassa East. And I almost feel guilty because having a senior, I feel like I can't complain compared to those people that have young children, kindergartners, first graders, those people who are trying to engage their kids online. I feel like it's very difficult. Before I get started, I should say thank you. Thanks for listening. Thanks for having us here. We appreciate it. I am going to try to keep it short. I think John covered most of the points that you guys have heard over and over. Kids that are getting left behind, they are, need emotional support, mental support, missing out on technology problems, internet access. Kids that are left behind, they're left alone at home, they're abused, they're missing out on meals. Parents are struggling. I've seen parents that have had to change jobs so that they can work with their kids at school at home so they're not left alone. And young children with the engagement online. I think, you know, to get a kindergartner to sit and look at a computer all morning is just not realistic. I think we're losing kids. One thing I haven't heard mentioned tonight that I think is important for the board to hear again is the percent of hospitalizations and deaths among young kids is so miniscule. And I realize that we have some concerns with our teachers and that population, but I think that that can be controlled. If we have teachers who are concerned and who have immune-suppressed systems, I encourage you to have those teachers work with the students who choose the virtual option. I think that is a way to win. And have the other teachers work with the 75% of kids that want to go to school. I will leave you with this. It's my understanding that the board members are elected by the constituents. You've had two surveys by your constituents telling you overwhelmingly that the kids want to go to school and the parents want the kids to go to school. Please represent your constituents and not your wishes.
My name is Julie Correll. My address is 717 Steuben Street, Wassa, Wisconsin. I am a retired Wassa School District elementary teacher. I had 19 years of experience and several years more of that as an elementary substitute teacher. However, right now I am an assistant home educator of my kindergarten grandchild. He is a virtual kindergartner. Every Monday and Wednesday from 8:30 to 3:30, I, along with my husband, assist in the education of my grandchild, Arlo. He's a quiet boy. He's very introverted kindergarten student. I will have to tell you that I have kindergarten teaching experience, but nothing prepared me for this. When I taught kindergarten, I found that these little ones learn best in an atmosphere of fun, playful, hands-on learning activities. They learn best in a community of learners. They learn best by sharing in the learning. They watch their friends. They learn by trying, by failing, but by trying again. But now I see my grandson, Arlo, having to take his little left hand and type in his Google Meet access code. And then he watches a video while others join in. And then when the session begins, his teacher, who is awesome, tries to include everyone in the learning, but who knows who is learning and what they're learning? A teacher asks a question. Arlo raises his hand to answer, but maybe it's not perfectly captured in the screen. His frustration is seen by his grandma, but not by his teacher. She has already called on someone else and is trying to interact with that one student in that Google Meet. And the meeting goes on with certain hands raised and certain learners called upon to unmute, and this goes on in every Google meeting. So I looked at the Wassa School District website, and I see that it has stated, "Our mission: To advance student learning, achievement, and success." Student learning happens best in a community of learners. Students achieve and succeed when they are challenged and encouraged in relationship with their teachers and their peers. You know that. This has been Wassa's strength throughout the years. On a side note, our three children graduated from Wassa East High School, each after 12 years of excellent in-person learning experiences. Please don't tell us that this is the best that we can do for our young people, the young people of our community. Open up the schools for our young people and their families, and then we can advance their learning, their achievement, and their success. Thank you.
Ms. Wong, feel free to take the full five. Well, I think we'll be okay if we start at 6:03.
My name is Jill Bame, 227-531, Boulder Ridge Circle, Wassa. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'll be frank. It's been a tough hour, listening to a lot of emotion from this group of people. Mr. Sillers, who I have not yet met, but I'll shake his hand at some point soon, I think captured the sense of community for Wassa. As a man who is fully dedicated to the community, giving of himself to improve facilities for his kids and for the kids of the community. And you could hear the emotion in his voice because he's not happy, and he shouldn't be happy. We're failing. The board represents the community. We put you here. Collectively, it's not going well, Dr. Hiltz respectively. Virtual learning sucks. And you know it. It's not your core competency. The staff's core competency is to fill this building, this beautiful building, and use it to educate kids. We're not doing that. We've chosen a suboptimal path for our most important resource. We should have spent every waking moment since the schools were closed last March figuring out how to make it work with kids in the schools. We can do it. The board needs to figure it out, and some of the board members ought to look in the mirror and question the decisions they've made. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, we are noticed for the 6 o'clock annual meeting of the school district. So I am going to put forward a motion to suspend the Education Operations Committee meeting and then resume it after the conclusion of the annual district meeting. And when we resume that motion, assuming the motion passes, when we resume that meeting, we'll discuss what from that agenda we will move to a future agenda.
I'll second. Bruce, thank you. That helps.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? We will suspend the Education Operations Committee meeting. We will resume it after the annual school district meeting is concluded. Yeah, go ahead.
Evening, folks. First, thank you all for coming. My name is Dr. Keith Hiltz, Superintendent. Just so you know, tonight's an unusual night. We have what's called an annual meeting, and this meeting, the time and the location was set by the board months ago, and so we have to hold this meeting now. This is a meeting of the electorate, and so we will elect a chairman. We have some business that the board has to attend to, and you, if you signed up to vote, you have, excuse me, you have some small little ballots that if we, we'll do hand votes, I'm assuming, Cassie, if we need, we'll use these, or we can use these for every vote. We'll try to do hand votes, so if it's an obvious majority, then we'll do hand votes. If we can't tell, then we'll have to do some written votes. There is, yeah, the agenda is online, and just so you know, that's the reason for this kind of chopped up evening. But so now we've adjourned the first meeting. We're moving into the annual meeting, and President Zunker will, she'll proceed. We'll get through our, we'll go through the annual meeting, take those votes, then we'll reconvene the Educational Operations Committee, and then we also have a special meeting after that to get, hear some presentations from potential board members to fill a vacant seat, and we'll also take up the topic of project relaunch. So sorry, just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page, you knew what we were doing. Again, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Hiltz.
Okay, so everybody has their script correct?
All right. Okay, it is 6:02 on Monday, September 28th. I'd like to call to order the annual school district meeting and budget hearing of the Wassa School District. Please stand if you're able to to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are at election of chairperson, and I am opening nominations for election of a chairperson for the annual meeting. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I nominate Trisha Jane Roche. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? The nomination was from Jane Roche nominating Trisha Zunker. Is there a second? There is a second from Beth Martin. I am seeking a motion to close nominations.
So moved. Lance?
Thank you.
Okay, so we will vote on the motion to close nominations. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? We have closed nominations. So we are now voting on a motion for Trisha Zunker as chairperson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Trisha Zunker will serve as chairperson for the annual meeting. Okay, now we need to designate the secretary for minutes, and the chair designates Clerk Cassie Peck as secretary for this annual meeting. We also need to designate a vote counter. The chair designates Cassie Peck and Bob Test to assist in the voting process and to tally votes at this meeting if necessary. Next, we shall enter into the meeting minutes into the record. The 27th annual meeting minutes that are included in the handout materials will be entered into the record. A motion is not necessary on this. Moving to the treasurer's report, Treasurer Lance Trollop will now read the treasurer's report, which includes the general checking account for the school district.
And a motion is not necessary in this one either. This is the treasurer's report from the general checking account fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, as of June 30th, 2020. Beginning cash balance and investments, July 1st, 2019, $28,42,506.54. Ending cash balance and investments as of June 30th, 2020, $32,427,408.57. This includes Fund 10, Fund 21, Fund 27, Fund 29, Fund 50, and Fund 80. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Noel Torson will now read the other post-employment benefits report.
The average wage of 125% for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Cash balance and income tax account for the year ending was $4,454,221.46. Total revenues versus July 2018 to June 30th, 2020, $160,356.25. The best return to life versus 2018 to June 30th, 2020, which includes dividends, under the last savings of Wassa, one term of the last losses, which includes $306,497.69.
Thank you. Now we will have the budget hearing on the proposed 2020-2021 budget from Bob Test, Chief Finance and Business Services Officer.
Thank you, President Zunker. Cassie, is this as big as we can get this up there?
How's that?
Believe it or not, this happens every year. We have an annual meeting every year, and it's usually not this well-attended, but this might start something. I don't know, maybe each and every year we'll have an annual meeting with hundreds of people. We can't talk about the entire budget. We have a budget booklet that's available. We give you some details. We talk about it a little bit. We give you a chance to look at it a little bit more closely.
You're not, you're, you didn't touch your mic. There, your mic's on.
Oh, you didn't plug it. Okay, now, right. Correct? Good? So we'll offer some details, and then you'll get a chance to vote on a couple of different things as the electorate, you're participating in the meeting. And although you were pretty quiet on some of the votes already, you can vote. If you registered to vote, you'll get a chance to do that again if you missed out. Our shared key interests are important, just to illustrate that shared key interests, priorities, and budget aren't all that separated. They're really one and the same, and our priorities and our shared key interests do drive our budget. This is a calendar that we look at every time we're at one of these steps. You can see we're getting towards the end. We're on September 28th, annual meeting. It's important to understand that October 1st, we get a
It's important to understand that October 1st, we get a lot of information from the state that changes some things. October 15th, we get more information from the state, changes some things again. So the Board has to reconvene in the end of October and set the final levy and establish the final budget. School funding simplified, I don't know, maybe you know this already, maybe you learned something about school funding tonight. School funding, when, you can't talk about school funding without talking about the revenue levy. The revenue limit has been in place since 1993, and it is the single biggest factor that puts stress on school budgets. It's controlled by the state legislature, and it does go up from time to time. Sometimes it stays stable. In 2011, it actually went down. If you start with the revenue limit and you subtract from that the state aid that we get, we tax what's left. So that's how your tax levy is established. In the Wassa School District, the revenue limit is about $11,160 per student. So each student has a revenue limit of that amount. We subtract off state aid, about 65%. We'll keep that in mind. Everybody in the state is funding the schools at about two-thirds, and what we're left with is your property tax of about $3,900 per student. The revenue limit is a perpetual math problem. I always talk about that being my favorite part of the revenue limit. I'm a former math teacher, so a math problem that goes on forward is a pretty good thing. It starts off with the revenue limit from last year, $10,445 per student. And then the state legislature says how much it can go up. And the state legislature, right now, as part of law, is allowing it to go up $179 per student. So we take, we start with the beginning of the year, inflate it $179 per student. We add things called exemptions. Exemptions are like declining enrollment exemption. There's protection in the revenue limit formula for if your, your enrollment's declining dramatically, you get a whole harmless where you keep it where it was last year. So we talked earlier tonight about declining enrollment, how much it hurts us financially. You'd be surprised how little it hurts you in the year it happens. It doesn't hurt you as much in the year it happens. It's a three-year rolling average, and when you lose that exemption, it hurts you in the following year. So the fewer students cost us money, they absolutely do. But it doesn't affect the current year budget as much as you might think. Another exemption is an energy efficiency exemption. And the Board passed an initiative about four years ago now, probably now five or six years, to reduce some energy efficiency projects and exceed the revenue limit to tackle energy efficiency projects to save money on utilities, save money on operational costs. And you'll see something about that a little bit later. So this is what you're left with, $11,160, the same number you saw on the previous slide. That's the revenue limit for each and every student. My picture is in the way, but only on my screen, so that's good. I want to move mine. This is the graph of what happened, what has happened to the revenue limit since 2006. In 2006, '07, '08, '09, '10, revenue limit was going up about 2.86% every single year. Then something happened in 2011 called Act 10, and Governor Walker at the time reduced the revenue limits and gave all schools statewide about 5.27% less money to spend on everything. And since then, there's been a little bit of a pivot in the state legislature where revenue limit doesn't go up so much anymore. Also, there was another source of funding that started to take the place of the revenue limit, and it was per pupil category belated. And it didn't matter how wealthy of a district you were, or how poor of a district you were, everybody got per pupil aid. And districts that are a little bit poorer, and Wassa is one of them, below the average, was negatively affected by that change. And you can see, since 2012, the per year annualized growth is 1.46%. So if it feels like money is a little bit tighter than it was in the early 2000s, that's exactly that, 1.46. And you also see the green creeping in. Maybe you can see it a little bit better from where you are, but the green is that per pupil increase. The blue is the revenue limit increase. From last year to this year, it's pretty flat. We're assuming a flat revenue between last year and this year. And it's not been statute yet, but there's been a threat, and it's anticipated that there will be a budget repair bill. And that's what happened in 2011, too, you may recall. So we're anticipating a budget repair bill to assume that the budget revenue is flat this year from last year. This is just a summary of what the revenue limit has looked like since 2006, '07. It used to go up $257 a year, $264, $275, $200. It went down $578. Since then, it goes up $50, $75, $75, 0000. This year, it's supposed to go up $179. We are anticipating a budget repair bill, and that budget repair bill is anticipating a $50 decrease. And it doesn't come as a surprise if you know that. The biggest expenditure in the state budget is K-12 public education. And if the state is recognizing reduced rec, uh, revenue through lower gas tax, lower sales tax for sure, some lower income tax, and if the revenue statewide goes down, and public schools are the biggest expenditure, you can expect us to share in that pain. So that is being anticipated to the amount of a $50 decrease per, per pupil instead of a $179 increase. That's built in what you'll see in a little while. How we split up our tax levy across all the different municipalities, all the municipalities are listed up there, doesn't come as a surprise. The city of Wassa represents about 61% of our property value. So coming along with that, they get 61% of whatever we levy. Same thing with Rib Mountain, it's about 20%. Rib Mountain gets 20% of our levy. We don't decide that here, the Department of Revenue decides that. What we do decide here, and in the end of October with the full Board, is the dollar amount that we do plan on our levy. Right now, it's built into the budget, it's in the book, and we're gonna present tonight, is a general fund levy of $30.5 million, debt service levy of $16.7 million, and a community service levy of $663,000. Put that all together, the full levy for now, because we know this is gonna change in October, because we don't learn some things until October, is $47,930,876. That's a levy that has gone up from last year, but it's also a mill rate that's going down. And you're gonna see that on subsequent slides. This is an interesting visual that shows how schools are funded and where Wassa fits in. I'm not gonna go through all the different animations that we've seen other years, but the first $1,000 we spend, 25% comes from the local taxpayers, 75% comes from the state of Wisconsin. The next $8,900 that we spend, 37% comes from the local taxpayers, 63% comes from the state of Wisconsin. The last $1,100 that we spend, the spending that we do on the margin, the additional spending that we do. Locally, it costs us 78%. Statewide contributions, 22%. And I almost thought about taking this slide out this year, because the Board's seen it a bunch of times, everybody gets it. Now it's probably more important than ever, because we're talking about two referendum questions. And one referendum question is to borrow $155 million for capital improvements district wide. We could talk a lot more about it, Dr. Hill's will later. And there's also question number two, exceed the revenue limit by $3 million. Our revenue limit for perspective is about $91 million. That is important to understand, because that's like a 22% off coupon for all additional spending. There are other districts that live in what's called positive tertiary aid, and the conversations they're having with their community is for every dollar of spending, it's gonna cost us a dollar ten of taxes, or a dollar twenty of taxes. So certain districts that are wealthier property value districts don't have the luxury of having that 22% off coupon. It's important to know every year, but this year it probably takes on added significance. This is just to show you that most of the state is in the same boat. Most of the state is positive tertiary aid. For every additional dollar they spend, they get aid. This is the percentage of shared cost by, of stabilization aid. Up on top, between 50 and 75 is where we are. You saw earlier, is what 65% of our funding comes from the state. Many are in the same boat as we are. That area, they're not very heavily aided. Suburban Milwaukee, not very heavily aided. Dade County, not very heavily aided. This is to show you that we're not the only ones in the state that are in declining enrollment. This is a picture of declining enrollment in purple and pink, increasing enrollment in green. And there's some flats probably in there that are like it. So we're not the only ones in decreasing enrollment. As a whole, two-thirds of the state of Wisconsin are in decreasing enrollment. And enrollment does lead to funding, we know that. Sometimes we get a year re-brief. This is probably the, the most general summary you'll see. There's a lot more detail in the book. Uh, the revenues from last year, the revenues from this year, there's a little bit of a shift. We do have some federal money that's coming our way from the CARES Act, so that changes it a little bit, but pretty close to what we had last year. When you're talking about $105 million in revenue and only differing by $149,000, that's very close. Here's the expenditure side, and we break expenditures into personnel and stuff, so to speak, 78% personnel salary and benefits, 22% non-salary benefits. It stayed about the same from last year. It changed by a couple of tenths of a percentage probably, so it isn't exactly the same. But it's important to understand that in education, we use human capital to build human capital in others. It doesn't come as a surprise that we use 78% of our budget on people, salary and benefits. We're not manufacturing, we're not producing things, so that should not come as a surprise. That's pretty typical statewide also. Sometimes it's right around 80, eventually. This is just to show how aggressive we are with pursuing alternative funding, grant funding, uh, $4.7 million in grant funding. And they're all in different categories. This one's a new one, S.R. Funds. It's about $1.3 million of federal money coming our way this year. Without that $1.3 million, we also have an obligation to share it with the private schools in our district. So lots of new information on that, some other schools. I mentioned this earlier, Phase 2 Energy Efficiency Exemption. This was an initiative the Board took in about 2014, maybe 2015. We have an obligation to show how this is performing. It's performing quite well. We're sitting at an 8.85 years payback, which means 8.8 years, the savings that we capture by taking this $10 million investment, including utilities, will pay for itself. Here's an illustration of that. Our Buildings and Grounds, uh, budget back in 2010, '11 was $2.9 million. It went down $103,000. The only way we can do that is by inserting some money through alternative methods. Sometimes it's referendum. In this case, it's an energy efficiency exemption, and that allows us to keep our Buildings and Grounds budget flat. Our capital projects, which we pass every winter, pretty much didn't change by much, but the utilities, look at that, obviously utility costs have been favorable recently. But we also tackled a lot of energy efficiency projects in our buildings, down 32% since Phase 3 of the Energy Efficiency Exemption was another borrowing that we conducted a couple of years after that. This one was for slightly less than $10 million. You'll notice also the payback is 12 years. Makes sense to tackle the more impactful projects first. 8.8 year payback, the next ones that were next to come, 12 year payback. But still a pretty good return on your investment. Here are the same numbers comparing those three budget areas. We do levy a community service fund levy, it's about $660,000, and the things that we levy that's taxed for, Growing Great Minds. Everything the community service levy has to be available for students and community members outside of our immediate district. Growing Great Minds is a before and after-school program for all students in the Wassa area, not just Wassa School District students. And that's legislative, and we can't use it for just Wassa School District students. We go beyond that. The Planetarium is open many, many hours beyond the school day. Planetarium is a community resource, and we tax the community for that as well. Technology Service, a very small levy, I think it's $10,000, where we, we use that to get the community more tech savvy, so to speak. The Technology Department runs that. School Resource Officer Program, Wassa Police Department has school resource officers in our buildings. Uh, there are four of them. Six, if you count the two dogs. We levy about $140,000 a year. We pay half of that. The Police Department pays the rest of it. Adequate maintenance for Buildings and Grounds, we added about $35,000 to this levy this year to make sure that we have enough personnel, in particular in the summer, but also spring and fall, to keep our outside facilities, softball fields, baseball fields, soccer fields, playgrounds, all adequately maintained. It's a portion of an FTE that we use exclusively for community service. Here's the budget that goes along with community service and all those different amounts. Obviously, the big one is the before and after-school program. It has suffered recently from declining grants, and as they are declining, we're forced to fund more of it through the tax levy. This one, I can't help but to share, just to remind people what things were like before the revenue limit. This is our mill rate, and that's when revenue limits went into effect. And I can't say it was because of reduced revenue, because it also had to do with increased property value. And property values go up, mill rate will go down. So it was a combination. There was incredible property value growth there in that stretch, but also schools were asked to restrict their spending quite a bit. So that's what happened from that peak, it went down. And I'll just blow up the last few years and show the stability. This is since 2000, and this is the $30 million referendum, and that was planned for. That was expected. We managed our debt in such a way, and we're doing that right now with the referendum, we managed our debt in such a way, that some other debt was falling off, we replaced it with some new debt. Our spending went up a little bit. When your spending goes up, your aid also goes up, and if your aid goes up in the next year, your mill rate goes down. So that profile that happened with the referendum in 2015, we're hoping to have happen right here as well. And that's after a 50 cent decline from last year to this year. With two referenda passing, that can stay flat. It automatically begs the question, what if a referendum fails? Will it plummet? And it probably won't for one year, because we still have callable debt. We'll still keep prepaying debt, because we don't want it to just drop, we want to manage it and let it go down a little bit. So we'll probably call some callable debt and allow it to stay pretty stable from that point forward. This is a summary by dollar amount. There's the general fund levy for this year compared to last year, up a little bit. The debt service fund levy, this year, last year, up a little bit also. Community service, that's the outdoor facility personnel that we're hiring. Levy went up by this much, 3.9% up, but the mill rate went down 50 cents. And the reason that happened is because property value went up 9%. The property value in the Wassa School District went up 9%, so it can support a little bit larger level and still has the mill rate go down. The mill rate is expected to go from 10.79 to 10.20, a decrease of 50 cents, or $50 per $100,000 home. Now, the last few years, when we've had this annual meeting, we've hit that mark almost right on the head. Five years ago, six years ago, we'd say something in the annual meeting, we'd get a lot of surprising data in October, and we'd deliver something completely different in the end of October. The last three years, that's been pretty accurate. And the reason why is there is included in this debt service levy, there's included some prepaid debt. And similar to your home mortgage, if you prepay it, you can prepay less if you have to redirect money elsewhere. That's happening right now. We can use this as a final lever to hit this right on the head this year. And in prepaying the debt, we're saving taxpayers $1.9 million in interest payments. And last year, what we did, we saved taxpayers $700,000 in interest payments. And the year before that was about $650,000. And I have to answer this, because the question will come anyway. Why can't we just use that for something else? We can't. It's just money we don't tax. The taxpayers save, but we can't redirect it to anything else, because it's limited to referendum payments. There's the summary on the bottom. The levy does go up, but since property value goes up, the mill rate goes down 4.63%. Here are the different contributions to that mill rate going up and down since last year. We do have an increase in revenue limit, makes the mill rate go up. Increase in referendum debt, including deficits. Deficits is just a fancy name for prepaying your home mortgage, or in our case, bond payments. That makes it go up 24. Community service levy may go up a penny. Uh, property tax charge back 3 cents, increase in equalization aid, we got more aid, because we spent a little bit more last year, so that makes your mill rate go down. Increase in property values, a lighter tax base, the support levy that we proposed, down 92. Exempt for computer property, that's a state aid variety. And that's where we get a 50 cent decrease, from 1079 to 1029. A couple more things are going to creep their way into the same chart in less than a month. Our pupil count, it will become official. It was taken two Fridays ago. It will become official. And even though revenue limit protects you from declining enrollment, it will change its somewhat. The exemption for the voucher program, we don't know what that is yet. Right now, Madison's got the data, and they give it to us about October 15, and they tell us how much we tax to cover the voucher system. We tax it, send it to Madison, and it gets distributed as vouchers. We don't know that till October 15. We don't know our final aid numbers till October 15. We don't know our property values until October 1st. So some things are going to change yet, but we're going to hit that 1029 right on the mark, because we're going to manipulate the prepaid referendum debt. I could talk for another two hours. Uh, you have some other topics you wanted to talk about, I understand. Uh, there's a lot of data found online, a vast budget book. Aside from that, how about if I turn it over to the chair?
All right, thank you, Mr. Tess, for that detailed presentation. Next on the agenda is old business. There is no old business. Next on the agenda is new business. And we have a number of resolutions to vote on. And everybody that is, um, a citizen of Wausau and has signed up is able to vote on these motions tonight. So, the first motion.
President, I'll put it up on the screen as well.
Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, so the motion is behind me on the screen. I am seeking a motion that the amount of $30 million, $572,150, be adopted as the tax levy for the general fund and $662,200 for the community service fund for the 2020-2021 school fiscal year. Seeking a first and a second.
First.
Second.
We have a first from Pat McKee and a second from Jim Boucher. Uh, just for a matter of clarification, Clerk Pack, how do you prefer that we do the voting? Voice voting or raising hands?
Voice.
Let's voice. Okay, we'll do this voice voting unless that seems we won't capture accurately. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, the second motion is a tax levy for debt service fund. I am seeking a motion that the amount of $16,696,526 be accepted, oh, I'm sorry, be adopted as the tax levy for the debt service fund for the 2020-2021 school fiscal year. Okay, first from Lee Webster.
Second.
Second from Pat McKee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The third resolution is in regards to furnishing school lunches. I am seeking a motion to furnish school lunches to the students of the school district and appropriate funds for that purpose. The school lunch program is self-funded through sale of tickets and federal and state subsidies, and is accounted for in Fund 50. First by Lance Trollop, second by Calo. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, the next, uh, resolution is in regards to authorizing reimbursement of expenses for school board members. I am seeking a motion to authorize the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling in the performance of duties.
Angie Lloyd.
Uh, we have a first from Angie Lloyd.
Second.
Diana.
Oh, and a second from Diana White, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. All right, Resolution 5 is in regards to salaries of school board members. School board members have received an annual salary of $3,100 since 2005. I am seeking a motion. Well, uh, is somebody going to make that full motion? I think we could do that.
I move that the school board annual salaries be established at $3,100 for the 2020-2021 school fiscal year.
Okay, so we have a motion by Angie Lloyd establishing school board salaries at $3,100 for the 2020-2021 school year. Uh, that would be a motion and seeking a second on that. Second by Diana White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Aye. Motion carries. All right, I'm seeking a, uh, this is the sixth resolution. Uh, I am seeking, and this is, uh, authorizing, uh, resolution regarding continuing authorization for the Board of Education to lease suitable buildings and/or land for school sites. All right, I'm seeking a motion pursuant to Section 120.105 of the Wisconsin statutes that the Board of Education be granted authority through the time of the next annual meeting to lease suitable buildings and/or land for school sites. All right, we have a, a first from Jim Boucher, and I think a second from Lance Trollop. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, two more here. Seventh resolution, this is authorizing, authorized resolution regarding continuing authorization to convey partial interests in real estate pursuant to section, oh. Actually, I'm, I'm seeking a motion pursuant to Section 120.1012 of the Wisconsin statutes that the Board of Education be granted authority through the time of the next annual meeting to convey small parcels and/or easements in school lands to governmental authorities or public utilities under circumstances in which property belonging to the school district is not needed for school purposes, and in which the value of consideration to be received in exchange for an easement does not exceed $20,000. Seeking a first?
A move.
First from Pat McKee.
Second.
Second from Lee Webster. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And then finally, I am, uh, seeking, this is a resolution to establish the 2021 annual meeting. Seeking a motion pursuant to Statute 120.081A, authorizing the Board of Education to establish a date and time of the 2021 annual meeting.
A move.
All right, a fir, I have a first from Lance Trollop, a second from Calo. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Uh, abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much. Last item on the agenda is adjournment. I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
A move.
First by Pat McKee.
Second.
Second by Jim Boucher. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. I am, yes. Yes, would you, would you like to do it between, before the add up, or between, before the special?
Uh, if I might, our, our, uh, Marathon County Health people have about a 30-minute window, so just.
Can we do before the special? Is, or, uh, is that okay? We'll do this faster, I'm assuming. Okay, I am seeking a motion to reconvene in the Education Operations Committee meetings.
A move.
Okay, it's a first by Lee Webster.
Second.
Second by Beth Martin. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are reconvening the Education Operations Committee meeting. Um, we have a couple of matters to, to address, and some things that will probably move off of this agenda. The first is that, uh, public comment. We still haven't actually done the submitted public comment, so I'm going to state those very quickly. Um, should we, should we postpone that though and move the Marathon County Health Department up, since we had?
Are they ready?
Um, yeah, I just need to answer. She should be ready.
Do any board members have any objections to allowing the Health Department, since we were delayed, um, and this is their window of availability to allowing that agenda item to move forward? I don't believe we need to motion on it, we'll just do that. Okay. Uh, okay, so while, while we're waiting, let's, let's approve the minutes. Um, yeah, because the, the remainder of the public comment is going to take a minute to get through. Okay, so Agenda Item 3, this was, um, the approving the minutes from the August 24, 2020 meeting. So I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of August 24, 2020. Okay, that's a first from Beth Martin.
Second.
Second from Lance Trollop. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Those meeting minutes are approved. Okay, it sounds like the presentation is ready. So we are going to move to Agenda Item 4.
Is Kathy playing and sharing the presentation? Perfect. Am I okay to start?
Yep, go ahead, Amanda.
Okay. So my name is Amanda Strowski. I'm a public health educator with Marathon County Health Department. I am the county's school liaison, um, working with schools across the county to get them ready for reopening to, to in-person students. Um, as I share this presentation with you this evening, I do want to draw your attention that this data was retrieved yesterday. Um, there are some slides that we were able to get the data for from today. Um, so just as you go through this, please keep in mind to check the time period in which you're, which you're viewing the data. Um, next slide, please. So I'd like to start with our daily case increase. This is a question that we get a lot, and it's part of our daily dashboard to the community. You will notice that we are in what we call a surge right now. We are, um, accruing daily increases in cases in which we once had on a weekly basis. So this specific slide goes through Thursday, the 24th. Um, however, um, on the 25th, we had 41 cases. Saturday, the 26th, we had our largest increase in cases, which was 78 cases total for the day. 68 on Sunday, and today we had 54 new cases. Next slide, please. This information here was requested, um, at the last meeting. This is the census tract data for what we would consider an active period. So an active infection is, um, roughly equated to about 14 days. So this is the time period from September 13th through the 26th. You will see the shaded green rows are census tracts that make up the Wausau School District. Uh, keep in mind when you're viewing this data that this is for all residents within your census tract. Um, for, uh, those of you, um, who are interested, this information is now available on our website. Um, and you can do it, uh, the state website used to have it for cumulative. We have broken it down for county residents by cumulative as well as active. So that's on our county dashboard site. Um, you'll also see here that there are cells that have the number 1 through 4 per Wisconsin DHS. We are not able to release the exact number of infection or death if it is less than 4. So we have to keep that in there for confidentiality purposes. Next slide, please. This information, um, was also talked about at, at your last school board meeting. So this is de-identified school data. So we have been able to track through the last, uh, five weeks of positive COVID cases that come in that, um, start within a school or link to within a school. So you'll notice in the second column that it is titled "Number of School Systems with Positive Cases." So this would mean the Wausau School District would count as a system. And, um, we have several public, or excuse me, several private schools that, um, they would have one building that is a school system. So I just want to help you to understand that it is not by district or by building, this is by school system. Um, so currently for the past week, we have nine school systems that have positive cases, at least one positive case. Uh, we have 36 cases within the schools in the past week. And then in the columns that follow are the number of close contacts in quarantine because of the positive case in the school. So, um, currently, um, because an infection, you're quarantined for two weeks. We currently have 369 students across the county that are in quarantine because of an exposure at school. And what's, what's important about that is if a student is in quarantine because, um, let's say their mom has it, or, um, grandpa in Lincoln County has it and they were exposed to them, those numbers aren't part of this. These numbers are tied to exposure in school. So what that looks like in the bigger picture, um, from September 13th through the 26th, 10% of cases in our entire county are tied to schools. Um, we're currently at 453 cases in the past two weeks. It's also important to note right now that schools are currently being asked to conduct contact notification in order to free our Health Department resources to notify the other 90% of the, the positive cases and the, the contact notifications. So, um, as you can see, schools are just a portion of what is happening within our, our larger community. Next slide, please. Um, so we are often asked, what does the Health Department look at when we're trying to determine what mitigation strategies to employ? We currently look at 30. We currently look at three, um, activity level sources. The first is a Harvard Global Health Initiative, um, in which we are ranked high. Marathon County is ranked high. They update their, um, ranking every day. If you're interested, you can just Google the Harvard Global Health Initiative and zoom right into Marathon County. We also watch the Wisconsin Department of Health Services Activity Level, which is based upon the burden of the disease as well as the trajectory of the disease. That activity level is released weekly. We are currently in high and we've been in high since June 24th. Um, and CDC recently released, um, indicators for schools. And according to their activity level, we are also ranked high. So we look at those three activity levels. We also consider our local testing capabilities. Right now, we are classified as strained. So when we talk about testing capabilities, we're looking at who is able to be tested. Is it only healthcare workers? Is it only EMF? Um, are they testing only symptomatic residents? Or are they also testing close contacts? We also look at how long does it take for a county resident, from the time they request to be tested to the actual time that they get tested? As well as the time from when that test is done to the time that it results? All three of those, um, those factors, who is able to get tested? How long they have to wait for a test? And how long until it resolves are what we look at to determine where our testing capability is. We then also look at contact tracing. So right now, you'll see that our contact tracing is poor. Um, this includes the time periods for when the disease investigation happens. We want that to happen within 24 hours that we're notified of a positive case. So if, um, I have COVID, we want to notify myself of that, um, within 24 hours of, of getting the call from the physician's office that I'm positive. Contact notification is also part of that. We want to be able to notify close contacts within 48 hours of that positive test result. And the third part of that is our ability to do isolation quarantine checks. So ideally, if we were not in a surge, we would be calling every day to those who test positive as well as those, their close contacts. And the purpose of that is to monitor what is happening with the disease for the person who is sick and helping a person who's in quarantine to really watch for when those, um, if those symptoms were developed to get them to, to be tested as soon as possible. And the last thing that we look at for schools is acute respiratory illness. So, um, right now, we're in, we're in good, uh, condition for that. Um, and what that really looks at is our school's baseline compared to the prior year? Are you, what level of illness are you seeing in sending children home with acute respiratory illness? Next slide, please. So when we look at these metrics, we then compare them to the mitigation strategies that we currently have for COVID-19. So you may have heard of some of these, um, already. The first one is student cohorting. So the idea of student cohorting is that you put them in a group, um, in order to limit the contact between other students and staff. And these strategies work by keeping the students together over the course of a predetermined period of time. So the longer you can keep the students together, um, the better off you are in terms of reducing disease transmission. So it also helps by reducing the contact with shared surfaces and also allows us to work with the schools more quickly when we need to do contact tracing with a positive case. And when, if that positive case is identified, it also allows for targeted testing, quarantine, or isolation of a single cohort rather than having the entire, uh, student body needing to quarantine if there's a positive case. The next mitigation strategy is physical distancing. To date, this is the best prevention strategy that we had. If we are able to keep people six feet apart, the risk of transmission reduces greatly. So, uh, in working with schools, that is the number one thing that we stress. If, if at all possible, get that six feet of social distancing between kids. Uh, masking, so whenever you are indoors or in a cold space and other people are present in the same room, uh, making sure that masks cover the nose and mouth. And it's important to know that at this point in time, CDC does not recommend the use of eaters. Um, the fourth mitigation strategy is the sibling exclusion policy. This is outlined in the, um, the DHS document for schools returning, uh, to in-person instruction. It's, it's the, it's a theory that if, um, my son gets sent down to the nurse's office and has two COVID symptoms, at that time when he is sent home, my other son also must go home. And they may return when the symptomatic son has, um, a negative COVID test, an ultimate diagnosis. Or if I choose not to test, uh, the symptomatic child, it's 10 days from, um, 10 days from the onset of symptoms and that they have improvements of symptoms and, um, that they're given food, without medication for 24 hours. What that means for my second son, however, is that he would have to remain quarantined for 14 days past, uh, the symptomatic son's isolation period. The purpose of this is to keep sickness out of schools. We do not want to have, um, a situation where we have infection traveling between school and community to a point where we cannot mitigate or suppress that. Um, the next, uh, mitigation strategy is the suspension of sports and extracurricular activities. So the, the theory behind this is that if you have, if you have an outbreak of cases within your school that you cannot mitigate and you cannot control, when you bring kids together in sports and extracurriculars, you are essentially mixing cohorts. And it really negates what you've been doing all day long, all the hard work that the teachers and staff put into maintaining cohorts and socially distancing. So that would be a mitigation strategy to consider. Um, the next one is partial virtual learning for selective grades. And that ties in with the full-time virtual learning for a building or a district. So the last two strategies can be used, for instance, um, if there's not enough staff or students to continue on operationally in-person, um, or as a reset period of time to allow ill children and those in quarantine to return to in-person at the same time. Next slide, please. So what you see there in the yellow orangish color are the current mitigation strategies as recommended by the Marathon County Health Officer. Today, she did add the fifth one of suspend, temporarily suspending sports and extracurriculars. It's important to remember that these are recommendations, um, they are not requirements. Um, but these are what are to believe need to happen in order to keep our children in school in-person, um, for the longest period of time. Next slide, please. So things that school districts, um, are to consider in terms of prevention and control strategies for, for mitigating COVID, um, looking at the transportation to and from school. We, we do have evidence of, um, exposures on school buses within the county. So making sure that you follow the transportation guidelines from DPI. Um, getting as few, as few kids on the bus as possible. Sitting arrangements where they are, you know, being able to track a student throughout the day so that if we would need to contact trace, it, it takes less resource both for the Health Department and for the school. Um, maintaining daily logs of students and staff to determine who they are with within the school building, especially if you have staff that travel between school buildings. Um, maintaining and reporting respiratory-like symptoms. Uh, this is really important even if you are in a virtual learning, uh, environment because it will allow you to determine if, do you have enough students to be able to move back into in-person education? Um, also preparing lists and communications to parents prior to the, um, outbreak occurring. DHS and DPI recommend that school systems are very transparent with their, with their parents and community of when an active, uh, case occurs. And so that the, those communications are not only timely but also accurate. And also notifying students and parents and staff to quarantine. So, um, like I mentioned before, contact notification is currently falling, falling to the schools within Marathon County because of the surge that is occurring. Uh, we would not be able to, um, notify students and the, the students' parents that they should be in quarantine in a timely enough fashion. So that is something that the school nursing staff is assuming throughout the entire county. And it's something that districts need to be, be prepared for because it is not a small undertaking. Um, and then also keeping students and staff quarantined, um, you know, really sticking to that 14 days because the 14 days isn't just a, a number that's picked out for quarantine. Um, it's really, quarantines are based off of the biology of the virus. And so with COVID-19, there is evidence that, um, infection can develop up until that 14-day mark, which is why, um, maintaining your quarantine periods for your staff and your students, even though it is incredibly different, difficult and inconvenient at times, it's so important to keeping COVID-19 under control. Next slide, please. Um, and I just wanted to end with this slide. Um, it is not the sole responsibility of a school to get kids back and keep them back. Um, we all need to watch our distance, wear a mask, wash our hands, and stay home if you're, if we're sick. Parents, um, can also play a part in packing lunches for your kids, transporting them to school on your own if you are able, um, and keep exposure points outside of school to a minimum. We are really in a crisis mode right now with the number of active infections that we have and we, there's no evidence that it will be slowing down. However, we also know that, that there are many other districts within the county that are bringing their kids back to school. Um, and so it's going to take the effort of all of us to get our kids back into the four walls of a school and to keep them there for as long as possible. So I went through that very quickly. I'm being conscious of time, um, but I can take questions if anybody has any.
Board member questions?
Will we all have to ask?
No. These, these questions are limited to, um, board members, uh, asking questions. The annual district meeting has concluded. Uh, we're back in a school board meeting now. Are there questions from the school board?
I do have a question. Okay. Amanda, can you hear me?
I think, could you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me, Amanda? Okay, so my question is, when you call, or when the school calls to tell kids that they need to go into quarantine, uh, is that voluntary? Or do they take a list and then the kids are not admitted to school until the end of their quarantine period? How does that work within the school?
So the schools are operating under the jurisdiction of the Health Department in order to quarantine. Um, it is not, uh, considered voluntary. They would have to wait the 14-days quarantine period. Um, and so it's, it's just a person other than the Health Department calling because we cannot get two people fast enough in order to keep them out of school.
I have a question.
Can I have another question?
Yeah, Amanda. Uh, I've heard that, uh, from some, some sources that, uh, well over 90% of the people who experienced the COVID virus are either asymptomatic or have very minimal symptoms over a short period of time. Uh, and that the ones that are, that are most likely to be hospitalized are people that are, oh, over 65 with, uh, other, uh, symptomatology. Is that correct?
Directly to the numbers that you used, but I can tell you that in general, the older you are, the more severe symptoms you have and the more likely you are to be hospitalized. That being said, what we are concerned about is, um, having, if you, the more people you have within your community that are positive with COVID-19, whether they're asymptomatic or not, they can spread that illness just as if they had symptoms. And so what, um, the Health Department and Wisconsin Department of Health Services are watching very closely is that we do not want an asymptomatic or, or a child with very few symptoms to then take that and infect somebody who is more likely to have more severe consequences. And that is a possibility. And so that's why we, we, um, need to control the spread within a school so carefully is so that it doesn't leak out into the rest of our community.
Other board member questions for Amanda?
Any?
Absolutely.
Amanda, can you give us, um, a read of what things are like in the hospital situation right now in our region?
Um, so I don't wanna speak too much on behalf of the hospitals because I don't know the most, um, up-to-date numbers. But I do know that we are at, we are surging. We are, um, we are hospitalizing more residents. Um, you may have seen the press conference from Aspire's last week. If not, you, you can find it at, at different, various sources on the internet. Um, our hospitals are filling up and it is something that we are paying attention to. And that's really why I ended the presentation with, it takes all of us, we, I mean, we, we all need to be practicing these prevention measures to pull ourselves, our community out of the surge of COVID-19 infections.
Are we nearing 0% before we go back to school?
Uh, the, the questions will be asked by the board. Uh, we need members of the public to observe the quorum in this meeting. This is a meeting of the school board. The public comment period has concluded.
We pay your salary.
Are there other questions for Amanda?
Our children.
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Let me unmute myself first. Amanda, I'm looking at, uh, the Wisconsin Hospital Association, uh, data. Do you use this data? Because it's been very helpful in looking at the cases per county. Also, looking at the bed count, according to what they have here, the total amount of beds in the state of Wisconsin. Do we, do you look at this?
Yes, our health officer looks at it daily.
And how do you perceive that, uh, data?
As far as purity or...
Well, Amanda, how do you, as an official, uh, perceive the data that the Wisconsin Hospital Association is putting out there? In relevance to us here in Marathon County?
So we, uh, look at the Wisconsin Department of Health Services website. You can look at our county or you can look at our region for what's called a HERC. We, we watch that as well. Um, I guess James, I'm, I'm a little confused on your question about how we, as a protein source situation. It's, we take information from our regional HERC to, to determine what our hospital bed capacity looks like. And so that is something that, um, our, we rely on our healthcare partners in order to strategize solutions on what, and on how to mitigate that piece of it. But it is a piece of information that the health officer uses when she's assigning mitigation strategies for the community.
And that's basically what I'm asking you is, because I'd like to be looking at the same data that you're using so we as board members can take a look at what's going on.
So if you're asking, do we utilize the Wisconsin Hospital Association data? Yes, we do. It is one piece in compilation with several that I've listed.
Other board member questions for Amanda?
I have one more.
Sure.
Amanda, in addition to, um, things that we've heard a million times, wearing a mask, social distancing, um, staying home if you're ill, what other kinds of things can our community do or people in our community do to get the amount of disease level down so that we aren't surging?
Um, so one thing that we... So one thing that we have noticed, when we looked at our last surge in July with, with the positive cases, our, the number of close contacts that somebody would have was six, eight, 10 close contacts. What we're seeing now is people have 37 or 42 close contacts. Sometimes they cannot name the people that they were within six feet of. And so as much as we all want to act in a normal manner, we have to remember that we can't do that yet. And so that social distancing and avoiding large gatherings is really, really important right now because the more close contacts you have, the higher your risk of disease transmission, and the more it taxes all of our systems. It taxes our, the health department's ability to respond. It taxes the school system in terms of the amount of kids that you have out of quarantine or the staff that you have available to come to work. It taxes our employers with their workforce. And so that is the biggest thing we can do right now is to maintain our social distance by avoiding large gatherings.
I didn't think I got this right. Amanda, you shared the absolute numbers of students and staff that have been impacted or affected by, by COVID across the county. I'm interested to know, what is the denominator for each of those groups? Out of how many students do those numbers represent and how many staff members?
I don't have that information for you. You would be, you could do that in Wausau for your district if you would wish. You know, your administration team has the, the number of teachers and students that would be isolated and quarantined because of the school exposure.
But what I meant is, is to understand how much we could expect to see by, by, by moving in the direction, you know, such as the recommendation that may come forward tonight. It would be nice to know that we would expect to see X percent of students or Y percent of staff to help us plan accordingly.
So your, Dr. Hiltz, or, and you may have that information in term, we wouldn't be able to compile that information for you to get all of the staff from every school building within, within the county.
Okay, I guess if, if a school is reporting a number of cases, they can't tell you how many students they have?
And we have current information.
That's something that needs to block it up until this, this call.
Did you hear Angie?
I did not.
Okay, Angie, can you repeat that, please?
Sure, I have the number of students and staff that we currently have that currently right now have a positive case and how many staff and students we have quarantined. So we have 10 staff and students who currently are COVID-positive. There are some who are recovered, and there are currently 150 students and staff in quarantine.
Angie, I can hear you. Can you speak up?
John Mulligellit.
We have 10 students and staff that are total active cases right now in the district. We have 115 students and staff that are quarantined.
Of what?
Of roughly 1,000 staff members and 8,000 students.
Do we have more questions for Amanda?
I have another one.
Okay, please.
Amanda, I, I think I've asked this before, but one of my concerns is that I realize that you're overwhelmed with, with all the things that you're doing around the physical disease, and yet I'm still waiting. I'm, I'm seeing articles from groups like the Psych Congress Steering Committee, from CDRAP, a number of other organizations, they're talking about significant increases in depression, suicide rates, anxiety, mental health, hospitalizations, those sorts of things. And somehow it seems to me that we're, we're taking a single focus. Are you getting any, collecting any more data around those kinds of other incidences, including child abuse, family breakup, those kinds of issues?
So we're typically not the department that collects that type of information, and we do watch it through sources like the Wisconsin New Threats Behavior Survey and things like that. We, we do know the importance of kids being in school, and we support kids being in school as long as the district is able to implement those mitigation strategies that we're outlining on the slides. We, at local level, I don't know if we will have that information in a timely enough fashion for that to factor into your decision. However, we do know that we have community partners that are talking about the hardships in, in what they're seeing, whether that's the mental health counselors that go into the public or go into the school districts within the county, and, and some other community partners like United Way and things like that. So we are aware that there, the hardships, the stories are definitely following the same pattern of what has been talked about in the national studies, but I don't know that we will have that local data available soon.
Thank you.
Other questions for Amanda? I think that's all the questions that we have. Thank you, Amanda. I think that's all the questions that we have. We appreciate that, your flexibility with the schedule tonight. Okay, so that was the fourth item on the agenda. We should, we should address here what probably is going to move off the agenda, Neil, a policy review.
We can move that.
Unless there's any burning desire for that, say we'll move that to Education Operations Committee for next month. So we will leave on the referendum planning update and the substitute pay rates. We do still have the public comments. It has been practiced, but not in policy, that I have stated, public comments with one name and sentence on those comments that is not in policy. Since we did extend public comment tonight, I'm going to ask that Clerk Peck redact the comments to remove email addresses and any sensitive information and post it on the district website. So submitted public comments will be available within the next few days under today's date on the Wasuschools.org website. If you go to where the agenda is posted for Education Operations Committee meeting, there will be a link that says extras, and you can see all written submitted public comments. Okay, moving to referendum planning update.
Cassie, do you have a short bit? Are you ready? Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give a few notes about the referendum. It's interesting, I, I hear from people about concerns about communication. So we thought tonight we would just share with the board what has been done in terms of communication. Clearly, we, we did not have successful communication with the families of Lincoln and Grant. We recognize that. We did reach out in a number of ways, and you'll see some of that tonight. Could you go forward? This is the, this, I'm sorry.
This is the whole slideshow.
What's that?
This is the entire slideshow.
Oh, it's the whole thing? That one, right there. This is just a graphic that shares the communication that's occurred since 2015. I'm trying to back look up here to see it. So you can see that there's been a number of in-person discussions on the far-left column between listening sessions, strategic planning sessions, those all occurred with community and staff. Those all led to the development of our strategic plan. This referendum was developed to support a number of those strategic goals. As we move down on the, on the in-person interactions, again, we have the listening sessions that were held, the ideation sessions, we had 10 ideation sessions, which included roughly 200 students, staff, and community. Two of those were for high school students specifically, and that all informed the development of this referendum proposal. And then obviously, we've had ongoing conversations here at the board level, face-to-face. Could you go back to the top, Cassie? We did a number of surveys. You can see that in 2015, we had a referendum survey that was mailed to every household. You can see the, the number of responses that were received. We do annual school perception surveys of both staff and parents. That information informs the development of this proposal. We did have nine online discussions. During COVID, clearly, it made it more difficult to interact with people in person. And so we created a thought exchange. We didn't create it. We, we utilized a, a crowdsourcing platform called Thought Exchange so that we could actually interact with staff and, and community online to explore ideas about this referendum. I thought that was a pretty creative way to reach out to people, and everybody had access to that.
Do you, can I ask you something?
Yes, please.
About the original surveys that went out, those went out also in Spanish, did they not?
They went what?
They went out in Mong and Spanish.
Correct. Yes, absolutely. Question was, did the surveys go out in Mong and Spanish? And yes, we, we do that. We also call when we know they're, you know, building-level staff call families to try and, and increase that outreach. And then to the right, if you go back to the top, Cassie? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed what, Bob, sorry. We also did surveys of principals to, to determine the, the status of their buildings in terms of education. And then lastly, phone surveys. Fall of 2019, we've done three phone surveys. They reached roughly 400 members of the community each, in each survey. Those were demographically representative by gender, by location within the city, by financial status as much as could be determined. So those were there. And then, let's see, the, and then summer 2020, that was the, the last survey. So those are the three surveys. And then so roughly 1,200 conversations, an average of, I think, six to 10 minutes, you know, that really explored these, the referendum proposals. So, so while we did fail, you know, we, we, we tried to reach out during the task force to, to, to find families from, from, well, every school, frankly. We invited 60 people. Forty said they were going to attend in this task force group. Twenty ended up showing up. And so we worked with the, the 20 who, who came in, and, and that's, they, they helped us flesh out that referendum proposal. So the conversations have been varied. They've been over a number of years. And, and what I'm hearing now, and I understand the, the concerns about making decisions for people without adequate input, I, I will own that, 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 that fact. What I'm not hearing anybody say is that it's a bad plan. So I, I know the process had a, had a flaw, but I think the plan is solid. So I just wanted the board, and you, since you're here, to know that there has been extensive communication over multiple years in multiple venues. Is that the only slide I've got, Cassie?
School facilities.
Oh. Yeah, this, there were some people who were asking questions about the phone survey methodology. I'll leave that here for people to reference if you're interested in that. I don't think, Bob, do you see any reason to go through that? Next one, Cassie? Oh, and then this is a little information for, from the WASB for roles that both staff and board members can and cannot play in terms of referendum communication. And I think that was it, wasn't it?
Some of the referendum presentations we're doing, is that the next?
Oh, yes, we've got a number of PTO presentations. Most of the social service groups are not meeting right now, so that makes it more difficult. Those that are are virtual, and we are attending a number of those. Mrs. White, our communications director, she's setting up a number of those. And here is a, a short list of people we'll be interacting with in the next month and a half. Questions about any of that information? Jane?
Well, I know that from online, from talking to people, there was some confusion about Montessori going into the Lincoln Building, and there was a perception that that was a tuition school, so that we would be putting this elite school into this building that would not be available to the people that lived around it. And that is so not true.
Right.
It would actually make it available to where people, because right now you have to provide your own transportation to charter schools, and this would put it in their neighborhood, and you could make these, it's very difficult right now.
Yeah, Montessori is a free school, just like any other school in our district. It just happens to be a charter school that is overseen in part by a charter council, and it has a specific educational model, but it is free. Thank you.
Dr. Hiltz, I have a question for you. Is there a plan to change the Wayne Pick members for task forces? Is there a, a plan in place to change that?
You know, I think the, the plan to identify members of the task force was good. We, again, we had 200 people who were in the, in these ideation sessions, and that really formed the basis for the creation of this plan. And so we, we targeted mainly those folks. You know, we certainly could have opened it up more, but frankly, as you see, we had a number of opportunities for, for community-wide conversation. I think the error was when we didn't get information from, or, or residents from Lincoln and Grant, which actually, we had one from Lincoln. But we, we, and frankly, we didn't go into this thinking that we were going to propose to merge Lincoln and Grant. You know, our first proposal was, let's do a reconstruction. And by the time we were, you know, to that point, you know, we were well on our, we had, we had done a lot of work with the task force, and frankly, we had a deadline to get the proposal to the board. So I think we're moving forward, yes, we can be more conscious of that. I think, and also, you know, recognize the, the role that COVID played in trying to get families to, to engage with. Yes.
So there will be a different process in the future for task forces?
Yes, we, I mean, we, what we've learned from this is, is we want to be more specific in our, you know, communication to people who are affected.
I agree. And also, one of the things that I had a problem with was that there were no meeting minutes that were taken during these task force meetings? Is that going to change? Will there be meeting minutes taken?
I don't know. I mean, I've worked with our task force before. This is not a public meeting. There's no requirement. It's not a committee of the board. If it were a committee of the board, there'd be a requirement to have minutes. This was basically a subcommittee of mine, and, and, you know, I don't take minutes for our, our administrative meetings that are public. So I don't think that task force meeting minutes, I, I don't think I would, you know, create and publish those.
Well, even, even if those aren't published, I would like them to be taken so that they are available for school board members to look at. Because the one thing that I have an issue with is that if we are spending taxpayer money, then there should be meeting minutes that are taken so that we can go back and take a look at what, what those decisions were, so that we can see how those decisions were made.
No, thank you.
May I just weigh in on that? Because we've had this discussion at a previous meeting, and then Jim did reach out with Wisconsin Association of School Boards and found some information which he may want to weigh in on. But I think to that point also, though, to the extent that Clerk Low, she serves as clerk, if she's available to attend those meetings, would, would that be possible that she could take those notes?
If, if we had school board members as a, as a part of those committees, we could. We haven't to this point.
Okay.
That would be an option we could discuss in the future.
Okay.
We did in our last referendum. Board members, can you please make sure you unmute yourself when you're talking because I'm getting texts that viewers at home are not able to hear you, and I can't keep up who's talking to Mike and un-mute Mike.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
So if I may weigh in, President Zucker, about the fact that Ms. Low, what I have found from the WAS, they sent. found from the WASF, they sent back that it's not a common practice, but if you were so wanting that, that would be up to the superintendent to do that. Just to let you know that most subcommittees don't usually keep minutes like we do here.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons they don't keep minutes is because minutes say what was done at a meeting. They don't say what was said at a meeting. So the minutes of a committee meeting would be, we met to discuss the, whatever the project was. Some minutes talk about motions and what was acted on and done at a meeting. They're not, they're not notes or recording of everything that was said at the meeting. So we get the presentation, the result of the meeting is presented to the board. Here are our findings, this is what we looked at, and that's presented to the board, and that, of course, is something that we all can hear. But the minutes itself, I don't know if they would serve a great purpose, because they just would say what was done. But, I mean, that's certainly something that can be discussed at a later date when we actually have the next kind of this coming around, but...
Well, I would... Well, I would definitely agree. I would definitely be myself available to take notes. And so, you know, this is the one argument that's kind of, what is being argued against the referendum is that there are no notes for this task force. And so we don't know who is at these task force meetings and who, and what actions happen at the task force meetings. They give us recommendations and advice on how to go forward with the referendums. And if we, as elected officials, are not accountable for taxpayers' money, then how are we, how can we argue that, you know, what we are doing is right and correct? We are not being transparent. And so that, the only thing that I'm asking is that these task force members, you know, be listed on these meeting minutes, and that we have meeting minutes available, at least for school board members. So I think that is something that we can accomplish, that is something we can do, so that in the future, if we are talking about referendum, if we are talking about spending taxpayer money, then we can go back to these minutes and say, you know, this is how the decision was made.
I understand. Thank you. I do want to be careful with the word "not being transparent." I mean, as Mr. Tullott mentioned, the work that the committee did and the advice was presented to the board in an open meeting, and the board voted on that, very transparent. I understand that the work behind the scenes was not, which is pretty common in this case. So I understand what you're looking for, and we can certainly consider that as we move forward.
All right. Are there any other questions for Dr. Hiltz on the referendum planning update? All right, thank you. I think we have one last agenda item here. So we're again postponing Miola updates until next month at that. Thanks, everybody, for preparing that exhaustive policy review. And we'll go to agenda item seven, substitute pay rates. This is an action item.
This is Mrs. Gundrum, our in-charge director. She'll present this.
I'm, is my mic on? Okay, good. Hi, everyone. My name is Tabitha Gundrum. I'm the Director of Human Resources, and it is lovely to see all of you other than just on a screen for the first time since I started July 1st. I am coming to you tonight, as I included in the board packet information, to request a modification on a temporary basis to our substitute teaching rates. I've included information in the packet in terms of why. In brief summary, due to pandemic, we are finding an increasingly difficult time getting our substitutes to be willing to come into our schools. The districts around us have done some modifications to their pay rates to allow substitutes to receive the long-term sub rate even for daily assignments. Some have gone so far as to require substitutes to sign agreements that prevent them from subbing in any other district but their own. And so in an effort to try to be as competitive and attractive to the same people that we share with some of those other districts, I am moving forward, asking that we pay the long-term sub rates temporarily during our pandemic time, when we have substitutes that are coming in to fill in for our teachers. I will just tell you upfront, currently during the virtual learning, we have been approving and allowing work from home as much as possible when people are in quarantine. As we transition to in-person learning, which that's later in the other meeting, and we talk about that, as that transition happens, at whatever point in time, we will continue to do a balance between possible work from home where we can accommodate that, to keep our own teachers in front of our students. But there are going to be times when we need to have substitutes. We have had some staff who have been impacted to the point where they are unable to work even now because of symptoms and things that they are dealing with. So we need a balance of both. And so that's what I'm asking tonight, and I believe the draft motion is included in the items that I've presented.
All right, I have two questions, one for Tabitha and one for Bob. The first question is, are we already experiencing that staff, or that sub shortage? And the second question is, for Bob, this board had to take action. That was a very tough decision in May and final action in June as it relates to the salary freeze. Is the funding that we have to approve, can you just touch on that? Because I'm concerned about how this is going to be perceived, given the action that we had to take earlier this year as a result of this pandemic.
So the answer is, yes, we have a significant shortage of substitutes. We have been continually trying to recruit. In a district of our size, we probably should be maintaining a teacher sub pool of around 250 students, teachers, would be my advice. We are sitting at only about 107 right now because of those that we have lost to other districts and those that have indicated that they're not comfortable subbing during pandemic. So we have a significantly lower supply. As for the budget, I can touch just briefly, and then Bob can follow up. Due to our ability to allow teachers to work from home, at least in the current timeframe, we have spent significantly less substitute dollars so far this year. And I would hope, I mean, I'm envisioning that that's going to continue because we are also not running professional development, or we're pulling teachers out of school in order to have them plug into those things and other kinds of things that, as a district, we naturally created substitute need. A number of those items have been set aside for maybe a later time, and so we're not expending those dollars. And so they can be repurposed in this way, and I'll let Bob address anything. Just finish your line, then.
Sure, I just want to acknowledge, yes, we are freezing salaries for the year. For now, we're waiting on a budget repair bill, and if the budget repair bill were not to come, we could take that action up again. Similar, the way we are giving all of our employees an average of $700 in one-time money, this would essentially be one-time money. This is an increase in sub rates for one year. Pandemic's done, sub rates go back to what they were. So in a sense, this is one-time money also. You've heard me say before that one-time money spends a lot easier than recurring money, right? Because then your budget goes back to, it's what we call normal follow-up.
And just to follow up, there might be other questions, but if we weren't to do this, and we have a harder time finding subs, it could make it more difficult on the teachers that are in buildings. And we hear stories about how they have to try to be creative, and I don't see how that might happen with safe social distancing practices. So it's to everybody's benefit that we have these substitutes.
You got a question? You, so your recommendation?
Can you unmute? Okay.
Thanks, Cassie. We should have 250. We have 107. How confident are you that going to the long-term sub rate is going to close a gap of about 60%?
I don't think it's necessarily going to close the gap of the 60% of the missing subs from our list. What I think it's going to do is attract the 107 to continue to be willing to come here versus going to Merrill or going to DC Everest or going to any of the other districts in our area. So what I'm trying to do is make us an equal attraction to them, because I do know that many of our subs would prefer to sub here. But if they're given a choice of a job in the morning that's here at $128 and there at $200 a day, which one would you pick? And that's the struggle that I'm up against. And so I'm trying to level the playing field for us so that we don't have yet again another thing that we're challenged with.
No, exactly what you said is my concern. I don't want us to necessarily be equal, because when we talk about bringing kids back into school, the last thing I want to hear is, now we're back in school, and we don't have people qualified to sit in front of the students? And I don't know that we should be so concerned about, again, being on a level playing field. We need to be a step up, not just from a quantity, but also from a quality perspective. So I don't, I don't want to hamper you guys and say, oh, you can only go to here. To me, during this time, you guys should do what you need to do within some reason in order to pull the right levers to get the people in the door that we need.
So my response to that, if you're looking for that, is I think our long-term sub rate is a competitive rate, and I think it will do just that. Although I am always open for the board to give us the ability to make that modification as needed going forward without having to come back, as long as we do that within reason, within the budget. But that's, that's like your comfort level, not something that I would put on the table initially.
Keith, I don't know what you guys need. I'm just saying, I would rather not have you come back with a "mother, may I go up another $5 because we're missing, you know, 40 subs or whatever it is." Just do what needs to be done, get the people in the door.
What's our current rate, our long-term rate?
Long-term rate is 200 and, I didn't bring that right with me.
Yeah, 230?
I think it's around 230.
The board is willing to approve 250, you know, and we would just, we would start at 230 and kind of see what we're getting. We would be, we would welcome the flexibility.
But we always get into a bidding war. I mean, I don't want to get all bid by these other districts anymore.
Yeah. Well, that's part of the issue. We raise ours, they raise theirs. It's that kind of a, it's that kind of a market. So, and we also leverage relationships with them. A lot of them like our, to be in our schools, and so if you want to go 250, we would certainly welcome that. We would go with the 230 and see what happens. Sorry, I probably didn't unmute. Oh, you did. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if there's other questions, but I think that we could move forward with a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the temporary adjustment of substitute rates to be equivalent to $250 during the pandemic, with administration starting at the long-term substitute rate and seeing if the need for flexibility is necessary.
So what?
Second.
Okay, that was a first by Pat McKee and a second by Jim Boucher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. With that, I am seeking, thank you very much. With that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a first from Beth Martin, a second from Pat McKee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. The board members like a five to 10-minute break? All right, let's take a break before we convene the special meeting.